All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order and you can do roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Schultz, oh, excuse me, Larson, Nelson.
Here.
Missed one. Weiss. Hoffman.
Here.
All right. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes from the previous meeting. Unless there's any amendments, I need a motion to approve the previous minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second already. All in favor?
Hi.
And pose same sign. Previous minutes are approved. Are there any items to be added to the agenda? Hearing none. We need to approve this week's agenda.
Move approval of the agenda for this week.
Second.
Right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Hi.
I pose. All right. Conflict of interest declarations. We can start over with Kathy, go around the room.
Uh, no.
Dennis Michael, no.
Chris Barkle, no.
Dan Kettering, no.
Sherry Hoffman, no.
Lauren Nelson, no.
Matt Evans, no.
Next item is reorganization of the officers, so can you do officer election once board? We start out with chair, yes, okay, so at this time then I guess I would turn it over to Dennis as the vice chair to run that election. I think that's the way we're supposed to do it.
Real excited about it.
Make them make them. We'll need a motion to
I'll make a motion to
Nominate someone.
Nominate Dennis Michael as chair.
Second.
Sherry made a motion to our appointment to me and Kathy second. I'd like to make a recommendation that Chris have it for another year.
I'd second that motion. Based, based on you not wanting it.
Pardon me?
Based on you not wanting it.
Well, I think that I've been on it Bennett before, but it's kind of a big learning curve, but I think that the best way to do it is you kind of get the ropes the first year and it is the second year, you have a little bit better handle on how things go and he's willing to do it, but I, you know.
So we can do a vote, are you okay doing it?
I'm going to rescind my motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion for Chris to be the chair by Dennis, second by Michael, second by Kettering, are you okay with doing a roll call vote? Or would you rather do paper?
Do a roll call.
Okay. Matt Evans.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Barkle.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
I therefore turn the meeting back over to Chris.
Very short term.
Okay. Now we need to vote on the vice chair. Alright, so any nominations for vice chairman?
I'll make the motion for Dennis Michael to be vice chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I guess we can do a roll call on that.
Evans.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Barkle.
Yes.
Michael.
Do I have to abstain?
You gotta vote.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Weiss.
Yes.
So for this session, Chris Barkle is the chair and Dennis Michael is the vice chair.
All right, so we used up our five minutes that we're normally waiting around, so we can move on to the first agenda item. Posh variance applicant is requesting a variance to minimum lot size in a rural transitional district for accretion property per article eighteen, section eighteen oh seven, and article nineteen, section nineteen oh seven. Said property is legally described as plat of lot B one being accretion property lying south of lot B in section sixteen T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. I guess, is there anybody here to speak on Thomas Posh variance? Yep, come on up.
Is a brave man to come up with a Viking shirt on. I really happy to see that because that's my
Not quite sure what he said, but what we're requesting, you said it the formal way. The way we understand it is we're requesting to add our claim ownership in some manner, whatever is allowed. The thin strip of of accretion ground, which is a dry river fork bed along the south border of our property. And our property is the the section outlined to the north on there. And the accretion ground would be the thin strip of riverbed along the south border. Which actually is the south border of South Dakota. The south part of the riverbed, it's the green outline there, which includes both our property and the accretion ground, the south part of the riverbed is all is already claimed as part of Nebraska by the Foley family.
This is really interesting because part of this is in the city ETJ, part of it's rural transitional, rural transitional requires twenty acres. We've already talked to the city, they're fine with it, so you're just trying to clean all this up basically. And we're going to be doing the next application is the same thing on the neighboring property.
Bill, a question, I guess, and and maybe this is not right, but from a like a point of order, shouldn't the plot be approved before we can issue a variance on the property?
No, because we did that with Jensen, when the plaque came through here, we took it to the county commission base, if they wanted the variance approved before the platters, because if you prove the plat, you're already saying that the minimum acres doesn't matter, so they want the variance first.
Okay.
Good question.
So this is just to add in that accretion property into your current property or just split it apart?
Just to basically define it. Beacon already shows that he owns all this. This is just putting on a plat, so there's dimensions and corners, we know exactly where it is. So when we get to this, there's no confusion on this border. Where where his property is, where Foley property is, where South Dakota is, where Nebraska is. It just cleans it up.
It's been plotted by both the Foleys and by us. And we, we found their the pins that were placed previously, I use Jack Brand. Last year we were out there and we located all the pins and so we're just trying to establish, agree to the same property line from the north end of South Dakota side.
So the the total width, the accretion property would be the ten point two seven acres that we're showing on her.
Accretion property is just this.
I know in the in the dark black, but it's this.
That's eight point or five point eight three.
Okay, so that'd be included basically are would be the land that they own right now is ten point two seven.
Yeah.
And then you're adding five point eight three.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, I see.
So right now you do own the that five point eight three acres, just we're trying to define the lines around it. Well, no, we own the ten point and we're trying to claim the accretion ground.
He gets a little deceiving because it already shows it because it didn't know where the boundaries were. So technically he didn't own all of this, but so this is going to clean it up and define who owns this. The neighbors who leased this ground came in and talked and they were, they talked to the city, so they understand and they're okay with it. So it's just a matter of, because this has gone all the way to Supreme Court, some of it has.
This has been going on for about seventy years.
So it's trying to clean it up, resolve it, say here's the line.
It went to the Supreme Court back in the nineteen fifties. And they turfed it back to the states and told the states to have their border committees determine the property line. My understanding is one state dissolved the committee, so it's never met. We've been hoping that over the years, we've owned it for about fifteen years now, thinking maybe one day there would be another border committee meeting, but it's it's never happened and then the Foley family went ahead and claimed the south part of the riverbed. And so we're just trying to do the same.
And the reason that they're not adding it to to that other parcel, the same thing with Jensen's down here is it's on the flood plain and if they add it to other plats, other lots, it's going to make those harder to develop. He's never going to be able to build anything on here, it's riverbed.
Yeah, it's it's actually quite a bit lower than the upper part that you see blocked up. You know, the riverbed is, it's a, it's a bank probably a good ten feet or so.
That's why they're not adding to the lot, they're keeping them separate.
They're just making a plot of the accretion property basically.
All right. Is there any other questions for Thomas? Thanks. All right, is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this particular variance? Seeing none, I will close it for just for discussion now.
I'd move approval of the variance request.
Second.
Right, I have a motion in a second for approval of the variance. There's any other discussion by anybody before we take a vote?
Are there going to be both the RT and ETJ, it's just like going to fall the same line straight down?
Okay. I'm assuming at some point the ETJ will move over and
Is each part or each parcel taxed differently? Or they taxed together?
I guess they're probably taxed the same because they're, it's not used for anything, but that's a question for the equalization, sorry. That's just political answer, I can give you.
Now that you've distinguished the line.
All right, so there's no more discussion, I can do a roll call vote when you're ready. Barkle, yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, motion is approved. Next item is the Jensen variance applicant is requesting variance to minimum lot size in a moderate density residential district for accretion property per article eighteen, section eighteen oh seven. And article nineteen, section nineteen oh seven, said property is legally described as tracks three A, six A, and AA of DJ's addition. Being accretion property lying south of lots A and B in section sixteen T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. Is there anybody here for the darling and Jensen variance?
Darling was just raring to get up here, so.
All right.
Basically, it's the same thing on the next property over. They had originally replatted some of these lots and they just did the same thing with the accretion, lined them up with the lots above them. Three of them were too small, they weren't an acre in size, but they don't want to add them to these because then it's going to take those with the flood plain issue. So they're just cleaning this up also, it's just all accretion. Same issue.
All right. Nothing special to add to this one?
Yeah.
And it's it's basic, basically non-billable property as far as because of the bank cutoff and the chance of flooding, so it's just, but it's just distinguishing a property line.
Yeah, they're non-buildable, so I guess the issue of them being smaller lots isn't really a big deal because nothing can get built there anyway. Is there any questions for darling? All right, thank you. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak on this particular variance? Right, seeing none, I'll close it to public comment. Discussion or I've entertained a motion.
Basically, the same thing that we were looking at in the last one is just, you know, actually just building a property line on the, on that, so we know where it is. I'd make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Right, I have a motion in a second and roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz. I'm sorry, Nelson, I actually have those changed, but it changed them back.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, motion is approved. Next item is Heine conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to hold events that may include live entertainment and serving of food and alcohol and agriculture district per article five, section five oh nine. Said property is legally described as the northwest quarter, southeast quarter, and in the northeast quarter, southwest quarter of section sixteen township ninety-three, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one address is forty-two hundred Alphonse Road, Yankton.
Just reminded, this was recent tag. So it's no longer rural transition.
All right, it's Ryan here, Ryan here, sorry.
So just first order of business a little bit. Mr. Evans has a conflict of interest, he has verbally assaulted me on my property, he has filed false claims with the police against me. I think it'd be best if he is recused from voting.
To speak on that, I've looked up definitions of conflict of interest and these are false statements. Mr. Heine was actually called out on stalking and in no way have I ever threatened him or assaulted him.
I have, I have his written statements here that were shown false in court.
Okay, I guess Matt, I guess just to keep this moving along, I know that there's history between you guys and I think it'd probably be easier just if we
So I, I see where you're I do feel very strongly, I am, I'm a by the book person here. I have done nothing to Ryan ever and it's, the last time he came up here, it's almost embarrassing that he states this false stuff in front of the public, saying that I lie or that I've assaulted him because these are lies and it'd be different if he just came up here and politely asked to recuse and there's no issues, but this is just going too far, in my opinion.
If I may. I think this won't get anywhere. I think his, his application is pretty simple. If he's not happy with the decision of the board, he can still go to the county commission, but I think it's a pretty, pretty simple application, so I would encourage Ryan to move forward and if he's not happy with the answer, we can still go to the county commission if that's okay.
I appreciate that, Bill, I think that's a good idea.
All right, Ryan.
Okay, so this is to allow us to rebuild our venue there on our farm that we used to, where we used to serve the public. And we are seeking the CUPs that we don't have any further interferences.
Yeah, he's been doing this for several years and there was a question about conformity, so he's just doing this to get back in conformity.
All right. So with the conditional use. I'm assuming all the ingress negress, the refuse utilities, all that stuff is not changing from current use.
No.
Where do people park if you have an event there?
We have I am gonna we have we have this whole area to the west side of our north hop yard that is open for parking. It's roughly two acres of parking.
Have you got any input from any of the neighbors about any of the events or?
After sending out the letters, I've had a few reach out in support and encouraging me to restart the events down there.
Oh, wait, they usually run.
It's our, it's our family farm, so we don't like to run late, we usually like to be done at nine o'clock.
Um, I guess. Are there any other questions for Ryan from board?
Ryan, I have, I have a question about when we, you were here last and we talked about it within the rural transitional thing, is your like vendors, your trailer that you use to go out to do events, you know, like catering or whatever you do? Is that what you have your permit on or is your, do you own a like an alcohol beverage license for your building?
We, we have it for, so the alcohol permit goes to the property.
Just for the property?
Yeah, so we have it to the property and we don't, we don't have a food trailer anymore, we have a kitchen onsite. We are, we do all of our alcohol service out of our tap trailer, which is mobile. So that we can go offsite with it to other places.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was confused a little bit in the fact that, you know, you had talked about catering out to other events and that you had a permit for that, you know, to an event trailer basically to go out and do things and I was concerned that you were trying to use the event trailer to feed the building.
No, not really.
The permit for the, for the structure, you know, the, the building itself to put on, you know, events there, even though it's in a trailer and you're serving out of it or whatever, but so that it's, you know, it's tied to the existing building.
It is, yeah, and then it is tied to that existing building, so.
Ryan, are you in, under construction on a small building out there?
Yeah, that's two, yeah, the, the second building is solely ag purpose, so it's to really kind of pick up a lot of expansion that the farm is need.
Will there, are you, will you just be using outhouses that we have bathrooms, we just use outhouses?
We, through the DNR, we established that very early on, one of our first things and we are, we always use portable restrooms for our events. That allows us to size it up when we have a bigger event or size it down. It also alleviates any concerns about septic.
Okay, where were the, where will the porta potties be located on the property when you have your events?
Within the square that was defined in the
So you don't have a specific spot where you'll, where you'll put the porta potties?
No, we don't, we will probably actually, if we have multiple events through the year, we'll probably have them in different spots each time because every event has a different flow and also, we also don't want to kill the grass underneath them all the time.
Okay. Where will your events be held? Will they be on the west side or the east side where they were before?
Well, given the situation on the east side of the property, we do, we are looking at holding, getting the west side of the property cleaned up more and pushing the events away from the east side of our property due to some concerns of safety there.
Okay. Will the events just be open like they were before, like with the tables and stuff like that, or will you have a fenced in area or?
Our property is fenced in, unlike others, we have a fence. We are an outdoor event and depending on whether it's a public event, we also hold, we also look like, we also may have a few private bookings as well.
All right, any other questions, Ryan? All right, thanks, Ryan. Okay, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this particular conditional use permit? Come on up and state your name for the record.
My name, Michael Campbell, and I live at two eleven Tulip Lane. I don't know exactly where my house is located by looking at that property, but it's a corner of Tulip and Orchid. Which is a new road that was put in. I guess I got some questions on this before I really form an opinion. What is a conditional use of permit? Now, my term of conditional means a start and a finish.
So a conditional use permit is permit issued by the county and it's basically where, before he has a permit to engage in that business, then there's a public hearing like what we're having right now. And then if it's warranted, there can be conditions put on applicant or it can be rejected or approved as is and wants to go forward with it, then if there are any conditions put on it, then the app has to follow those.
Well, is there any start and stop?
In this particular case, there isn't less start and stop, it kind of continues on. And it flows with the property.
Okay, is there any hours of operation for the events?
That's something that can be discussed as a condition, but it's not in the application thus far.
Well, I think you'd want to have that in the permit before you grant the permit, wouldn't you?
Depending on circumstances, sometimes they might be warranted, I guess, that's what we're here to discuss.
That's usually how it works with conditional use permits. Conditional use permits, it's discussed between us and the public. As far as any conditions that the board feels or the county commission feels. If they do feel that there are conditions that need to be met. They are applied before approving or at the time of approval of it, so.
So as I understand it, I'll paraphrase here, is that this conditional permit will be you know, just, I'm going to say it could be extended to a permanent permit with certain conditions attached to it down the road. Am I stating that correctly?
Well, it is a permanent permit, as long as he's meeting the conditions of the permit.
Sir, sir, but may I ask you, have you read the ordinance? Sir, sir, may I ask you, have you read the ordinance on conditional use?
No, I haven't. That's why I have a lot of questions. I had, and I apologize that I'm not.
You have your ordinance available to read the conditional use permit?
This is definition of a conditional use. He still would not be appropriate generally with or without restrictions throughout a zoning district, but which if control has some memberage allocation and so on for both public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, convenience, appearance. Such uses may be permitted in such zoning district as conditional uses, if specific provisions for conditional use may be ordered. I'll go down to a. So that's basically definition of conditional use. As far as, once it's granted, it's, it's in, it's active unless he quits using it for, I think we're discussing two years, one year, two years. As long as it follows any conditions that the commission puts on. I think the section looking for a bill is up anyways, a couple pages.
So, so an event could go from eight till four and from eight PM to four AM in the morning.
So one of the things like Ryan did state, uh, this, he does live at this residence here.
I'm sorry, I'm already here.
No, that's my fault. I'm not talking close enough to the microphone, so.
All of you need to talk closer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So like one of the things that Ryan did state, he lives at this property. He does normally shut down by eight or nine o'clock over there. So as far as that goes, I don't see that being a problem. As far as him shutting down, I don't know if he would have an issue with the requirement, I guess, of being shut down, but I don't think that he would. He's not going to play as far as I know past ten o'clock. I don't know what his opinion is.
Well, as a property owner in the area, I'd kind of like to know that. I mean, that's important to me. Uh, I'll be straightforward here. Uh, I purchased property down there a year ago. I just constructed a new home in December of twenty twenty one. And it it was owned at a certain level and zoning, as I understand it, is done to protect everybody, businesses, ag businesses. And when you start doing spot zoning, that's my term, I use it, you create conflicts. And right now where I'm at, it's very quiet. The traffic is minimal other than our neighborhood. UPS, man FedEx, Refuge, garbage collection, that type thing. It's quiet. And that's why I chose to live there. And now we're allowing certain events to come in because it's been spot zoned. And I'm the one that's so to speak, kind of being out, out to, hung out to dry.
Well, to address some of your concerns, uh, I guess it's not been spot zoned. It's zoned per ordinance. And you are zoned differently than his section, that is true, but you're also almost half a mile away by the map as the bird flies. Also, Mr. Heine has been operating his business there like this for years. And basically now he's going through the process since he was there so long prior to all of this zoning and to clear up any issues, he's trying to get this to where it's perfectly in conformance with our zoning ordinance so that there isn't any questions. So actually the operation doesn't sound like it's changing. And I guess if there's, we've asked Ryan this already, but he might want to address it again, but I don't think the operation is changing from what it historically has been. And in relation to everybody else's property and yours in particular, it's not on same road or and it's fairly good distance away. As far as being concerned about zoning, your zoning districts, you are quite separated.
I live about a half a mile from Mr. Heine's place and I've never heard, ever heard any activity from there.
Well, I, like I said, I'm new for December and I've been through this in another community. I didn't like it then. And be honest with you, I don't like it now. And because I think you, we set zoning restrictions to protect everyone. And then when you start, my term is spot zoning, even though it might not be yours, but that's what I use. You start changing the parameters. You start changing the circumstances and Mr. Heine might be going through the correct procedures of everything to get in compliance. But I think there needs to be more outlined in this conditional, conditional use permit before it's granted.
I have two questions.
Yes.
You've now heard the ordinance, right?
What?
The ordinance that was read to you?
Yes.
So now you've heard it.
Yep.
Can you pick out one thing in that ordinance that would be illegal for Mr. Heine to do there?
Not by the ordinance, but pretty general. I'll be honest with you. You know, pretty vague.
Okay, so your concerns are just mostly concerned about the hours of operation and noise late at night.
Noise level, I also had a question and the gentleman over there asked about the parking. Is there adequate parking? I mean, we have another establishment down there, Stringers. You know, I frequent that place. I go in there, but you know, two weeks ago on a Saturday night, there are cars in the ditch. There are cars lined up down the road. Uh, pretty unsafe conditions, you know, but do I favor the establishment? Yes, I do. Cause that's where I like to hang out.
So do I.
Yeah, yeah, but I just, I just feel like there's not enough information to grant this permit at this time. I think we need more, you know, like maybe hours of operation. You know, how many events are going to be held? How, you know, you know, June to September, you know, I don't know. I just think there needs to be more, more teeth put in it.
Right, I think it's pretty pretty safe to assume that there won't be any events from mid-September to mid-May.
Yeah.
I, I can't hear you, Ryan.
Yep, yep, I'll give you a chance to address some of the concerns. Is there anything else I'd like to add?
No, I just, I got, I got the letter in mail. Thank you. I appreciate it. I wish I would have got one like this when it came to the zoning of the property. And I know Mr. Guth Miller, our homeowner association president, as I understand it, he did send out a email to the people in the homeowner association of what was occurring, was unable to attend at that time. But again, I think when you start messing with zoning and changing things, you do an injustice to everybody. And I think you need to stick, stick to your guns on the zoning, the way it's designed to be done, to protect everyone. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this particular conditional use permit?
Can I clarify a couple of things?
Yes.
First of all, his property was originally zoned real transitional, which was never meant to be permanent. Real transitional was designated to be changed at some point, so that's why it was rezoned. He could have gone to Lakeside Commercial and he could have had a bar and been up there until two in the morning, I guess, if he wanted to. And everything around that is Lakeside Commercial too. So it's, it's kind of hard to draw a distinction in that one parcel because everything beside it is Lakeside Commercial. So, and I believe, you know, if, if there's an issue in the future, you can come back and put a condition on if there's a lot of issues brought up. So it's not like, once we issue it, we can't go back and address future issues. So.
Okay, um, I guess, Ryan, would you like to address some of the concerns brought up and give a little more clarification on those points?
Okay, so yes, as, as of, I have been operating this, we first started the farm in twenty fifteen. We've been, we've operated for three years before we got, before we had to shut it down. And we operated without a single complaint. The shutdown was outside of, was more issues about zoning and stuff. Then also, it's really hard to give us hours of operation seasons. Generally, the season is the summer. But some of the events, you know, this isn't a bar that we are trying to do an agritourism thing. Some of our events are tours. Some of our events are private events for tours and stuff like that. So they can happen in the winter. They can happen in the spring. They're not large or loud or things like that. When we talk about stringers, you usually hear the noise from stringers a lot clearer than anything that we've done. Our, our atmosphere that we've always tried to strive for is a family friendly farm atmosphere. That also is because we live there and it is our home as well. So we wanted to make sure that this is a place that we'd like to live because we moved down there to be to have peace and quiet and, as well. And so that's why we really don't, we weren't going for a bar where you're open seven days a week till two AM. That's not exactly what we are going for, like stringers. And so we don't, we prefer not to have a time limit restriction simply because if you do have a private party, it could be, it could be an indoor party. You probably wouldn't even know it would be happening. You know, we have a very flexible nature in that. The goal of this was to be able to operate our, our farm as a tourist attraction.
Uh, could you address again the parking and traffic?
So our, our lot is seventy seven acres, seventy seven and a half acres. So most of it's just farmed, uh, regular row crop. We have about two acres that is planted off as grass for parking, which is, I don't know, I think several, several, several stringer slots all put together, just open parking. Not, and that's not including the roughly, we'd have roughly another couple of acres that you, we could fill around our hopyards and stuff, you know. There's, we have way more parking than probably any other business in Yankton.
And the traffic flow is basically off of Deer Boulevard down to Alphonse Road and into your property?
Yeah.
One question I do have, Ryan. So in the past, you've had like just the acoustic music. You'll be doing those acoustic music again, most likely or?
It most likely, yeah, there'll be events with acoustic music. There's also some that are a little bit more louder, but more concert level. But again, we usually like to be done by nine o'clock because it is, you know, I have small children. It's, we like to we like to have our home back to us by the end of the night.
All right, any other questions? All right, thanks, Ryan. All right, I'll give one last chance on the public comment. Seeing none, closed public comment on this issue for discussion.
I guess I would say that as, as I understand your situation, that fits very well within the state's agritourism drive that they're trying to develop tourist attractions.
I think one thing too that, you know, for clarity, I guess the fact is that this is not a twenty-four seven business like stringers where you're operating every night. You know, just the crowd and the crowd and the crowd. This is a, this is a planned event type of situation where people come in, you know, rent your building or hire you to put on an event for them, whatever, but it's a private event thing. It's not an open door bar. And I think that there's there's a big difference between that and what else goes on down the road.
I guess seeing that this is just defining this a little bit in the conditional use permit, but it's not really changing the use of how it's historically been used. And it meets addressed all the issues of ingress, egress.
Um, I do have a couple different things on that as far as ingress, egress. So ingress, egress is on Doe Avenue. Part of the conditional use permit, uh, three years ago was there was a road agreement on that road. Mr. Heine brings in semis for food. I believe once or twice a week. On that, Ryan did not want to be a part of that road agreement. I believe there will be increased traffic on this area. I believe that it should be the same condition on the CUP as it was on a CUP three years ago.
Which CUP are you referring to?
The CUP for Yankton RV Park three years ago.
And this is talking about Alphonse Road?
Correct.
Will I be able to ignore that condition just like you did?
I didn't ignore it. Did you get a letter?
I didn't open it up for.
Look, um, I have a, an easement that goes back over a hundred years. I think that process that that easement is my, I am a landlocked property. That is my only access to my property. He cannot, he cannot legally deny me access to my property.
All right.
So basically, I thought precedent was set when I got my conditional use permit. It is public right of way. And when I bought that property, it went into public right of way. And when that happened, Pat Garrity said, since it is public right of way, we will do a recommend or a requirement, sorry, for a road agreement on this road. I did write up a road agreement with my lawyer and sent it to him and him and his lawyer sent it back and said, we will not pay a dime, so.
That is incorrect. Please speak the truth, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Barkley, I would please like to get him removed from the microphone. I would like.
I'd like to clarify something. If it was on your CUP, it can't be applied to, to somebody else. Is that, I would assume.
It's.
So if this agreement, that's part of your CUP, it's a requirement for you. They can't put a condition on a neighboring property.
It's a CUP, sir, so.
CUP for you.
A CUP for him is what we're talking about. This is a board discussion here.
I don't, I don't think we have record of a CUP for him.
No, he's getting a CUP right now.
But you're talking about a CUP that you got.
And I'm asking, Bill, this is a board discussion for.
You're bringing up something.
Bill, don't interrupt me. This is a board discussion for one. For two, this here is a CUP. I am asking for the same condition to be set on this CUP as the same condition was set on me. I am asking for the same condition to be set on this CUP as the same condition was set on me three years ago for my CUP for the same road.
But I think we have an issue that the CUP is the CUP.
Correct.
You don't go back and look at everybody else's CUPs. This is his CUP, it deals with his property, look at his situation, bringing up your CUP is out of bounds.
I disagree. It is previous CUP that set precedent.
Okay, let's, let's cool it down now. Ryan, please.
Yes, I'm just gonna simply say, we have a sixty six foot easement against, against the properties that he's talking about. He does a lot like that. That easement has been around for a hundred years. It's heavily recorded, it's heavily been used. The county does not have authority over those easements.
All right, Ren, thanks. What I think Matt is trying to say is that on the same access road, he has a road use agreement. And he thinks that a road use agreement would be appropriate on this conditional use permit. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, basically, all I'm saying is, three years ago, if the county can put a condition on my property to have a road agreement, the county should be able to do the exact same thing for him in his conditional use permit. I'm not asking for any more than what I believe is fair. Like I said, semis are coming down this road, that asphalt is completely crushed. That, I'm just asking to do what we've done in the past on other CUPs. Like, for instance, on other CUPs, there has been privacy fences that have been required, okay, all the way around the entire CUP, which costs twenty, thirty grand, okay? And then on the neighboring property of that CUP, that person is not required a fence at all, so I'm just looking for the precedent to be set and to be fair to every scene, every CUP equally.
So. Right, I know you want to talk, but please hold off till we get done with this. So what are you suggesting as far as a road use agreement? I know you think that there has to be a road use agreement in this area to address the road situation. But what is your actual suggestion?
I would have to look back at the twenty eighteen one. I mean, a road agreement in any way could, I mean, there's so many variables, it could be different percentages or whatever. And, and I would, I would be open to working that out, but the answer that I got flat out was, we're not paying a dime.
Now, that was incorrect, okay?
What, wasn't, wasn't your road agreement dictated by the use of heavy equipment that was coming in and out to develop the property?
No, Don, this, this was, no, this was the one three years ago, Don, when Pat Garrity was around and that road turned into a county road.
We're talking about Alphonse Road.
Correct. And then the one you're talking about was a separate CUP for the north property of that.
I have a question. Do you have a copy of that CUP? I was told that it was missing.
Ryan, can you please ask him to sit down? This is not public comment. There needs to be order here.
That we're dragging in his CUP into this, and this is not okay because this is a separate thing. The last time his CUP came up, hold on, the last time his CUP came up, there was a talk about road agreements. And the commissioners there said, I already had my road agreement. I had my sixty six foot easement. That's been there for a hundred years and that's all I get. I was told all I deserve is a dirt road. You know what? I have my easement. You cannot take that away. I'm a landlocked property, you cannot deny, deny me access. And the county has no authority over easements.
I'm sorry, I don't want to. I mean, we can move on from that if you want, I mean.
In that sense, I think the, the road agreement that he's talking about doesn't are the conditions that he put out, wouldn't deny you use of that road. So you still have access to use your road.
The conditions, I guess, a condition or the road use agreement is basically a condition that you would, in defined terms, basically of the shared maintenance of the road based on your use of it.
So here's the problem, is that I have been doing all the maintenance on the road.
Okay, so first of all, no, first of all, there is no public comment here, okay? He needs to sit down. There needs to be order here. Second of all, he says that he's done all of the maintenance, me and Matt Archer, okay? Have rewidened and gravelled that entire road at our own expense after the denial letter came to us that where he said he would not pay a dime. Matt Archer came into that, a new guy, he was gonna be completely screwed over and had to do his own road. And I said, I will help you pay for the gravel and the grading, and I did all the grading and everything on that. He needs to sit down and there needs to be order at this meeting.
All right, man.
Mr. Evans, this is not public comment. I am the, I am the person here and I'm trying to address the things that you are bringing up.
Ryan, please, have a seat, Will. Uh, we're just gonna do board discussion now. If there is more input that we require from you, I'll, I'll have you address it and I'll call you up. All right. Matt, this is kind of getting into a back and forth between you guys. And that's kind of why I was concerned about.
So just understand that it would not be back and forth if he was not at the microphone. This would be board discussion. And I would respect everybody's points of view.
Yep, Matt, I understand that. And it's gotta remain respectful on both sides of this, so. With that, I know you feel strongly that there needs to be a condition for road use agreement. Do you have a specific defined suggestion or anything as far as a condition?
I think you had a great idea as far as traffic rating. I think that's fair. Basically, a percentage of traffic, that is what was discussed before between me and him. The agreement was actually agreed upon between Whitetail, uh, myself and Matt Archer. We all agreed to pay a certain percentage according to the traffic. The percentages were fairly close, I thought, like, it was like twenty some percent, twenty some percent. And then I think Whitetail's was thirty percent or something. But I think that would be adequate, I guess. I mean, I can pretty much take anything rather than absolutely nothing. That's the main thing to me, I guess.
Bill, can you bring the map back up, showing the site, please?
So it's, the first part of it was multi-layer darn it, chip seal, so they didn't actually asphalt it. They did like a layer, an inch or so of chip seal, and then the next year they did another layer and another layer, which made it brittle over time. And now it's just crumbling and it's potholes. Uh, Matt Archer fixed the potholes two years ago and then I fixed the potholes after that. And it just, it'd be okay for cars, but when semis come in there, it just crushes it. And then from, I think it's Gary, I don't know if it changed or not, but the last address on is all gravel.
Where's that line up for gravel and asphalt?
Can you zoom in at all, Bill? It's at the very last road, so if you move your cursor to the right, that very last road that goes into the trailer court, uh, one more over right there, that's where the asphalt ends, right there. Halfway, probably, if I had to guess.
So it's not a county maintained road, then the asphalt?
No roads out there are county maintained. They'll have either road districts or road agreements on them, but it is a county public road.
So Matt, to clarify what you were saying, you said semis go in another, the grain trailers or the other?
Food, it's for his food business, for his catering business. I'm pretty sure it's twice a week that they come in.
But depending on the crop, there would be grain trailers and stuff too. Obviously, it's one bachelor only access.
Like I said, guys, I'm this isn't about me. This is about setting precedent all the way across the board to make sure everything is fair with every CUP that we do. We need to be equal all the way across with every CUP. So if we put a road agreement on a CUP, for one thing, especially the next door neighbor, we gotta do it for the next. If we make the next door neighbor put a privacy fence all the way around him and he has no noise, we gotta make the next door neighbor who's gonna have concerts do the same thing.
As planning a zoning office, I would disagree. Each CUP is unique, each CUP has to be looked at individually. You can't just blanket conditions across every CUP.
Exactly, not every CUP, Bill. Like I said, this is board discussion and
You just said across all of them.
No, I said with these, we need to be equal with each of them, okay? So as far as the CUP goes, I was required a twenty to thirty thousand dollar fence all the way around. And I don't have concerts. He's literally right next to me and I have no noise. He has noise and he should be required a privacy fence also. That would be fair. Do you disagree that that's not fair? That he has noise and I don't?
I think there's noise all over down there. You cannot, your campground, he's a camp, your campground, he's not.
Yeah, there's no
Say that we're gonna do the same condition for everybody in the same to make
Well, I'm on the commission bill and you're not, so I'm the one who makes that decision. Yeah, he's, this is board discussion by definition, is it not? What is he doing at the microphone?
Allow Bill to speak because he is a representative from the, uh, planning and zoning.
We've discussed this because we're, we're going through the zoning changes and you can't cover everything. We, we can't have an ordinance that covers everything and you can't treat every CUP the same. You have to look at each one's unique characteristics.
Yep, and that's what I'm doing.
What's going on there and make a decision based on that, not what happened to somebody else.
So what would be the reason why I would be required a fence and he would not? What is that reason?
Mister, Mister Chair, I will be called a motion.
What's up?
I will be called a motion.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the CUP.
I'll second it.
I would like to further discussion.
All right.
We haven't even talked about bathrooms. We haven't talked about any of that. Would we allow a bar to have bathrooms with porta potties, guys?
I believe that you probably do need bathrooms for pretty much any kind of public establishment, and I believe he has addressed that in the discussion previously about bringing in portable bathrooms. So what is your issue with?
So normally the location of the portable bathrooms is right along the property line by the roadway. I disagree with portable bathrooms, period. I think there should be a commercial bathroom if he's gonna be running a commercial business.
And then also, if you're gonna compare to everything else, pretty much other, all the other outdoor events use portable bathrooms as well.
That's fair then, that's by the book. If that's what it is, then that's what it is. So we haven't even talked about quiet times either. You guys don't believe a quiet time beings as this is right next to residential area less than a hundred feet. You don't think quiet time is a good deal, especially after the rezone in Ag being right next to all of these houses?
So what is your suggestion as far as that?
Mr. Honey said that he would have his, most of his events shut down by nine o'clock. So I would say nine o'clock would be the quiet time, so the babies can go to sleep.
I guess, is there a quiet time placed on, since you like to compare to all the RV parks next doors, there a quiet time placed on RV parks?
We do not have amplified concerts.
Yeah, but
And like I said, this real transitional.
Same kind of way.
Sorry, what was that?
There's outdoor congregations of groups of people.
Not amplified microphone, music and electric guitars or acoustic guitars. I think you cannot compare the two. And rural transitional was a buffer zone between these bars and commercial, whatever else and residential. And now that is gone. We are right next to residential. He borders residential on his entire, well, not entire, on his south side and the people at the RV parks stay there on the weekends also and have babies that go to sleep at nine o'clock or eight o'clock.
Dad, I, I, I can tell you that.
You wanna see where the housing is?
I do, yeah. I'm, I'm confused on the layout, so.
So Dennis Christensen owns all of that directly to the north. The next lot up there is already, the next lot up there is already designed for houses. I've already seen that development plan. All the way bordering to his property. So there will be houses all the way up to his property on that number sixteen up there.
So your idea is to give preference to future development there rather than establish business that is going to operate exactly the same?
That is what zoning is, is it not? Where we look what's gonna be in the future?
And I wanna make one quick point. In the, in the past, whatever it is, two or three years, but particularly in the last year and a half, of the people that have come to me about issues in, in the county, I have had zero people come to me with issues about Mr. Ninety's pops fire. If I counted the number of people that told me they think we're turning that area down there into a trailer house trash dump, I couldn't tell you how many have come and, and told me that now.
How many trailer houses are down there? The trailer houses have been there before zoning, were they not?
I'm, you know what I'm talking about. I'm talking about your camp.
Oh, so.
You knew that.
Oh, so you don't like my campers?
I'd, I'd say, what I was saying is ninety five percent of the people that come to me and complain about an issue are complaining about the number of campers down there. All they see is campers. Now, we stuck up for you when it was issues.
Like what?
Well, you got to permit to build there.
Yeah, as I shouldn't have been denied.
We stuck to, and, and his permit shouldn't be denied either.
So there's more people in this audience right now in opposition than there are for it right now.
Sure, bring your, bring your team in and
I didn't bring my team in. I don't even know this gentleman.
Okay.
And he's the one asking for quiet time. I'm looking in the best interest of my community.
I'll call a motion.
All right, I have, we've had plenty of discussion on this. I guess if the board here feels like adequate conditions haven't been placed on this, then you are free to vote against this motion, but for now, we're going to move forward with this motion and a vote. So keep that in mind, if anybody's against it or thinks that we need more conditions on it.
So done.
That being said.
With your motion, there's no, uh, I'm just clarifying his motion here. So there's no quiet time or anything else like that with your motion, Don?
The motion was approved to, to approve as presented, right?
Oh, I didn't hear that out of his mouth. Did he say that? Did he say as presented?
Don, would you like to clarify that your motion is as, as the condition? All right. All right, so that being said, it's as presented is what we're voting on at this moment. So go ahead and do roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
I'd really like a road agreement, so I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, next agenda item is the Roloff's conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to use his house as a vacation rental in a moderate density residential district. For Article seven, section seven oh nine, said property is legally described as lot one. Dan Kaiser addition in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, section fourteen township ninety-three. Range fifty-seven together with a perpetual easement for ingress and egress across. Over and through lot four of Kaufman tract eight. As planted in book S eighteen, page three fifty-one and a perpetual forty foot ingress, egress and utility easement. Over crossing through the northwest quarter, southeast quarter. Section fourteen township ninety-three range fifty-seven for the benefit of lot one, Dan Kaiser addition. County of Yankton, South Dakota, as per plat recorded in book S eighteen, page three fifty-four. E nine one one, address is five oh six Hidden Hollows Drive, Yankton. Chad Rolles here to speak, or anybody else? Come on up and state your name, please.
This is the property that the CUP has been applied for. They also own all this property.
Hi, my name is Carrie Whale. I'm here on behalf of Chad and Lori Rolles, who could not be here tonight, unfortunately. They purchased a gorgeous log home. They have approximately thirty-eight acres. Their intent is to eventually make it their permanent home, but right now it's a vacation home. It's a dream of theirs and they would also like to. Obtain a conditional use permit so they could use it as a vacation home rental as well. They have, of course, sent the letter out to all of the. Corresponding or adjacent neighbors and have actually either met and or spoke in person to all of the property owners. Minus two, they were unable to connect with Hatcheski Family Properties. They have a hundred and sixty acres, but they do not have any homestead on that property and the other. Property owner that they were not able to make contact with was Frank Porter family revocable trust, who also has forty acres. Of which there is no building on site, but otherwise they did personally, either in person or over the phone, did. Connect with each of the property owners in addition to the required letter indicating their, their consent. So I'm hoping by lack of any other persons here that that's a good sign.
Okay, so this is just gonna be like Airbnb.
Yes, Airbnb verbo, yes.
And I guess they said it was gonna be periodic. It's not full-time.
Correct. Presumably it would be more so in the summer, probably not as much in the winter time. There's quite a lengthy driveway into the homestead and their nearest neighbor is probably a quarter mile away at best.
So they're right here. This is their property. The driveway goes all the way up here and the nearest neighbor is up here.
There might be one just a little bit closer.
I guess as far as services to the property of. All utilities or garbage service, any of that kind of stuff is pretty much the same as if someone was living there.
Correct, set in place. In fact, actually probably less usage since they don't live at the home full-time. So there'll actually be less usage than if primary family would have been residing there full-time.
How large is the property? Like how many people would potentially be staying at one time?
It would vary. It's a three-bedroom home with a full basement, so presumably six to twelve people.
And there's adequate parking on the property for that many?
Yes, there's not only a two-car garage, but there's also a ample cement parking pad.
About septic capacity?
There's two septic tanks there. They're getting better.
So this is the parcel of the house, like I said, they own the land around it also.
So the house itself is on a two-acre parcel and then there's another thirty-six and a half acres or so that surround that house. And then, of course, hopefully you can tell by the white with the car there, but sometimes as we get older, it's harder to see, but there is ample parking there.
And none of the neighbors raising issues they had with it?
No issues. They did have questions about potential renters, if they were gonna have dogs running at large. Whether or not there's gonna be any hunting on the premises and those have all been identified and. I hope any fears alleviated.
So are you gonna allow hunting on the property?
I knew that was gonna come up. So as far as any renters of the property, the answer is no. The owners of the property do intend, they have three kids and they do intend to go hunt on their own property.
Any other questions for board?
Is it pretty easy to get to? I mean, the signage is clear where a person would, where their driveway is.
It is. So you can get to it either way, but Highway fifty-two is how most people are gonna get to it through the lake. And then you're gonna come up to the northbound and then turn off of Nottingham. And then it turns into like Bill showed, a pretty lengthy gravel road. There is a road maintenance agreement in place. It is, it is.
So I think that we're trying to get at there is that they're not gonna have an issue where. Random renters are gonna be driving into all the neighbors' houses trying to figure out where they're going.
No, no, they have actually signage in place. I'm hoping that they will. Appeal. It's a beautiful magnificent log home. It's the only one of its kind in the area, so there would be.
Cement shingles?
No, those were taken off, so there is asphalt shingles that are fairly recent, probably within the last five years or so.
I think.
They used to have a big house, yes.
That's the same house.
A long driveway.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you. And I guess I will address it, even though it's an empty room. Is there anybody from the public wishes to speak on this conditional use permit?
Seem none rented for.
Just for board discussion now. Yes. To me, it seems kinda similar to all the other. Airbnb type. Conditional use permits that we've gone through. No real differences as far as. Concerns from the neighbors or anything. This seems pretty secluded.
Motion to approve the CUP.
There's a motion on the table for Matt.
I'll second it.
And a second. Any other discussion, otherwise we can vote.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Thanks. Alright, we have a bunch plats.
First one is the one that goes with that first variance, the posh plat.
Yep, posh plat. I guess just to read it again is the plat of lot B one being accretion property lying south of lot B in section sixteen. T ninety-three, north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval of the plot.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering and second by Evans. Vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, next is Sorensen plat of Lexus Edition in the northwest quarter of section thirteen, T ninety-six, north range fifty-six. West of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. That one goes along with the. Well, that wasn't the Jensen one.
We actually approved a while back and then we went to the county commission. They wanted us to come back through for the parents. So that one's already approved.
Okay.
This one, they're just cutting on twenty acres. I think it's pretty rough territory out of a field. One of the sons to build a house. So it meets the minimum acre, minimum acres.
Great.
Move approval of the plot.
Second.
Motion in a second and we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, next one is the Hub's plat. Administrative plat of lot one, except the north, one hundred seventy feet of the west, two hundred thirty feet thereof. Smith Farming Enterprises, Inc., subdivision located in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, section thirty-two township ninety-four. North, range fifty-five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
This is more of a courtesy. It's actually in the city ETJ, but they run them through us just to be courteous. So the city's already approved it.
So this is just in the ETJ? It doesn't fall into any of our other zoning districts?
No. Apparently they still run it through us as a courtesy like we do them on that three-mile buffer.
Alright, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, motion in a second. Vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, law plat of lot three of block four, law overlook subdivision. In the southeast quarter of section seven and in the northeast quarter of section eighteen, all in T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the. Fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Second.
That was Dennis?
Yes.
Okay.
Second by Kettering.
Okay, Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, law plat of lot ten, block one, law overlook subdivision in the northeast quarter of section eighteen. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Assuming these are right next to the previous ones.
The first lot was over behind, up above. Yes, this one is over the Okey Doke Lane, just finishing out that area, yeah.
Move approval of the plot.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ready for a vote when you're.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Okay, Chuka plat of tract one, Chuka addition in southwest quarter of the southeast quarter. In government lots ten and eleven, section thirty-four. T ninety-six north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, tract two, Chuka addition. Government lots five and six, section thirty-five. T ninety-six north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM and tract three, Chuka addition, government lot thirteen, section two. T ninety-five north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM, all in Yankton County, South Dakota.
You're gonna go through all the latitude and longitude on there?
Well, you could write it a little more concisely.
Go ahead and read all that.
No, I think you, they were just cleaning things up here a little bit.
Would you explain something though to me on that, Bill? It's government lots because it's against the river.
Definitely so, yeah.
Just about all that. Well, everything down to the east end of it, that's all gets underwater.
Yeah.
Tract three's been underwater several times.
I've seen that, yeah. That's my understanding. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I've seen that other places where it's, it is or used to be underwater.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, so we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright. Yes, public comment, seeing none. Close public comment. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
Who we adjourn?
All in favor? Post, we are adjourned.
Yes. Well, that's not for next week's meeting. Don, did you wanna say anything about the packets?
I, I think it's next Tuesday, isn't it?
The joint meeting, yes.
We're gonna have the joint meeting just to go through the changes that the planning, zoning are recommending. That was based on comments. That was based on the comments that they got from this group and the commissioners.
Did you wanna go through any of this?
No. What do you mean by wish list?
That's what we're gonna talk about next Tuesday at the county.
What we're gonna talk about next Tuesday is that what you said, I believe, earlier this week with the red light change.
Yes. That's, that's part of, those are the ones that they could do quickly and, and group together. There's several things on that wishlist. That still have to be addressed. Some of them might take a while and we'd want public input on some of them, I'm sure. And that's gonna get over in a half an hour?
Yeah. Thing was pretty self-explanatory.
And most of those changes are real basic, to just clear some things out, add a few, add a couple of things that were just overlooked, take a couple of things out, but just. So they're pretty, that's if they're pretty basic stuff.
Could you send out that wish list thing again?
Sure.
Copy that, just send that out.
You mean the original that had everything?
Yeah, well, basically anything that we're gonna address that's on that.
Okay.
List. I guess you can send the whole list out so we have a chance to.
Okay.
Be reminded of it again.
Yes, speaking.